Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, August 5th, 2013. We have a few public hearings scheduled for this intro part of the day. It's our normal meeting would be 7:30. So if you look at your agendas, we have 7:00 PM Phase 2 Water Upgrades. Brent and I and Steve will talk and others are familiar too. But as you heard last month, the Phase 1 is winding down. It's at substantial completion, which means the wellfields have been reconditioned, new sensing and monitoring, equipment is in, the backup generator and the LP tanks are in on that side so we can survive any more large storms. And through the village itself, we've had about 95% of the meters installed. We have about 49 or 40-ish on a list yet to go. But in our meetings with the USDA, who is the source of our money along with Rural Development and EFC, it's the Rural Development Section of USDA and the New York State EFC that enable the funds here. They're indicating that across the federal level, there are some unused funds which they're suggesting that we apply for to start working on Phase 2. The Board has met and authorized me to start the application process. What it means is we have to put some paperwork together using our engineers' reports and so forth, and then we take that to an application phase to see if they'll commit any more money to us. So it's not a done deal, it's really applying again. And it would be a repeat of the same process as Phase 1 in that we would have to bond that amount. And what USDA is saying is, like I said, they're signaling that it might be worth doing and they're signaling that it's worth doing short-term, meaning immediately. So part of the process is we met as a Board and then we noticed that for a public hearing tonight, this is not the end-all, be-all stage of it all. What I mean by that is we still have to do a bond resolution and the restraint set applied to that and so forth. But just for the audience and for the Board, Phase 1 was called 1.3 million dollars and that we would start paying off once the project closes out and so forth. And Phase 2 is predicted from the engineers' reports at about 3.8 million dollars. And Phase 2 is addressing the aged elevated water storage tank. We have indications that we need to do certain work with it in the not-too-distant future, meaning painting outside, reconditioning inside, and the numbers are hugely high. They're like in the $800,000 range just to do that. And then Phase 2 could also include what I would call infrastructure improvement to the buried piping system in a quadrant of the village, which would be, we'll call it the southwest quadrant. It'd be from, say, Route 199 down to Smith and Zipser, that area through there. And the interesting part about the project is that not only does it include the new piping system in that area, but it would also include totally new road guidance, meaning we're not digging up and making trenches and then leaving warzone-type roads for the future. So that's the overview. And like I said, we're not committed to it, we have to apply. Brent and his world of acronyms, this is what a PED, the preliminary...
Eligibility Determination.
PED, Preliminary Eligibility Determination. What that says is USDA confirms that, yeah, they do have money and they have looked at us and they will commit it to us again. The one downside is we're, in a negative sense to us, as the village's household income goes up, the USDA gets a little less generous as far as the lending rate and so forth. Brent could explain it too, but right now there's a cutoff point, I think it's $55,600, which keeps us in a certain interest rate range. And we're about $600 below that right now, so...
We're currently, based on 2010 census data, we are at $55,600 as household median income. As of 2013, we've increased to $56,131. The cutoff for the intermediate rate from USDA is $56,882. So we're about in the $600 range, not qualified for the good rate.
We always tease the USDA folks. I'm not convinced that the median household income in the village is $56,000, but they're getting it from their census data or whatever. So the reason I bring that up is if we push over that one, it goes to a different interest rate structure. And right now, they're telling us to borrow the 3.8 million for 38 years. They're looking at a 2.75% interest rate. Phase 1 is at 2%, and that's just the change in the market that's happened since we committed to Phase 1.
Actually, Phase 1, we qualified for the poverty rate. And that was because of the mandates, the Texas County Department of Health and the New York State DEC, so they mandated these improvements, which did qualify us for what they call the poverty rate.
So two, in those larger numbers, 2 and 2.75%, they do add up to significant changes. But in the end, the question becomes, we have an aging system and we do know, Brent mentioned mandatory upgrades, one of the things that's weakened our system is the status of the elevated tank. What I have on my desk here, you've all probably seen, this is the engineering report for all phases of the project. And in here, they address the tank and options. And one option is to move away from elevated storage and just pump off storage tanks in the main wellfields. So that's being looked at. Oftentimes, when I think about it, we use power to push the water through the system into the elevated tank, and then gravity does the work, but we're constantly replenishing the elevated tank. So in a sense, we're pushing the water, just as if we're pushing it through the system in my mind. By the way, the purpose for the public hearing is just to let people know about it. What we would do next is we would publish an intent to move forward. We would have to file, these are technical things, a formee with USDA, and a letter from here just saying we want to apply, you know, here's our application. And Brent, timeline-wise, do you have an idea when they would get back to us, that they said anything? But indications are it's relatively short-term, it's this budget, your money, and things such as it, meaning federal money.
The new federal budget comes out in October, so, yeah, between now and then. So they're, right now, it's starting to look at projects that are ready to go for the repurposed money in the federal government. So all the money they've allocated, USDA has allocated to all the states that are either not used for projects or projects that have come under budget and gone back to Washington. So they have this money that we're trying to get, get a hold of. And again, what I said, that they encouraged us to apply since we had all our engineering reports in line and wanted us to successfully complete Phase 1. So we're primed at this point to receive additional funding.
To me, the two primary things are the condition of that tank and then the unknown condition of our pipes. We budget every year money for both, but there's no way, we don't have $800,000 surplus somewhere to go work on that tank. And we play cat and mouse with the pipes under the ground, what's going to break, you know? Not going to, we've been fairly lucky with the past year or two, but one can never tell. So it looks like it'd be worth moving forward. And it is a composite way to do it, meaning the engineering is included, the materials, the, all aspects of it. But again, it hinges on, we don't have the real final approval from USDA, so it's, we just want to move forward. So I know as a Board, we've talked about it, but it's a public hearing, so what's out Anybody have any questions from the Board?
I think another reason for Phase 2 is that we're trying to make sure that we have adequate flow and supply for the fire, hybrids for fire protection. So that means the main should be adequately sized to handle the potential need for that. So that's all part of the improvement for Phase 2, the distribution system. And the area that we selected was based on comments from our previous water operator. This is one of the most densely populated quadrants in the village, and so it's a good point to start. So there is a Phase 3, but that's down the road. And that'll cover the other distribution, other parts of the distribution system here in the village. So this is a good time, good project. It seems like we're qualified at this point at all, just based on what USDA determines
So we've given ourselves some time for this first public hearing, there's two more to do. I don't hear any thoughts or questions from the outside. And again, just to repeat, it's some paperwork processing now and it's not a done deal, but we'd like to move forward. So that being said, I would say I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing on Phase 2 Water Upgrades.
Some look.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next thing, water code change from cubic foot to gallons. Have to find something, but what this is, our current code talks about how we bill. And Brent, do you want to talk about the water gallon consumption, the water meter reading system for a minute? Will I find my piece of paper here? How we're now in gallons instead of cubic feet, and I'll find something.
Right now, we've been on cubic feet, so I don't know that the meters we replaced are going to gallons. And gallons is, I think, a more familiar unit of measure for most people. So even this water bill right now, we've converted from the new meters which read in gallons to cubic feet to keep that consistent. Because this last water bill was a blend of the actual old meter reading plus the new meter reading. So next, the next meter read will all be in gallons. And so our current law stipulates the rates in cubic feet. And what we're proposing on doing is keeping the same rate, but changing the quantity from cubic feet to gallons.
I'll pick up for a minute, thanks. I was, hadn't missed filed something here. Yeah, we need to, if you look at our village code, our billing mechanism is stated in the code, so we need to make a change in the local law. And as Brent said, the new meters purposefully went to gallons just because they're more in the nomenclature. It's what people think of when they consume water today. And I think that's a smart thing. So what I did was take the existing rate per cubic foot and just did mathematical conversions. We have a minimum of 750 cubic feet right now for a flat rate of $45 and a senior rate of $38. We're not changing any pricing, we're just doing the math, how many gallons are in that number of cubic feet, and then also adjusting the equation on the other side of the equal sign to say, okay, how many hundredths of cents per gallon is that versus tenths of cents for cubic feet? So essentially, we're not playing, lowering or raising anything, we're just codifying the gallonage piece of it. The plan is, like Brent was stating there, is the next quarter, we should have a real pure gallonage reading. Right now, we had a hybrid, and I say hybrid, Steve will talk about in his report a little bit too, but some meters were still on cubic feet and got converted to gallons in the middle of the last quarter. So we had to modify the computer program to say, okay, there were 2,000 cubic feet and 18,000 gallons in that billing cycle at that account. So your current bill shows a conversion factor on it, and that's what you'll see there at So this first part of it is to codify that. And then what we did, folks, is separately, we had a charge to fill swimming pools, which we don't do too much in the village, but it was on a sheet in the water department. So we essentially just put that into the basic code itself. We took the tapping fee and its enhanced tapping fee for cutting and crossing roads. And then custom requested turn off and on, these are all existing rates. Location of water lines requested by owner, and then water meter read requested by owner, those were called out specially, where we'd have to put one of our staff people over and above their radio job to go out. And then what we did add was three other important things. Like we said before, there's about, call it 40 folks that have not converted to the new meters yet. There's one more date, August 10th, a Saturday, to get that done. There apparently will be some that do not convert, and the rest of us can't carry them because their system will require manual reads. We have the ineffective meters that we're replacing, there's a fudge or an error factor in them. And then there's the labor to do all of it inside as well, meaning we'll have to keep secondary program going for the billing department to work the cubic feet until these people convert. So in a letter we sent to the folks that hadn't converted, we stated in the letter that there'll be an additional fee of $50 per quarter to allow us to pay those increased costs for manual reading, erroneous equipment factors, and secondary bill computation. And then when we do change out the meter, right now, the labor's free and the meter's free. The meter would still be free, but we won't have any money to go to change out the meter with anymore because the program will be closed out. So the customer would be responsible for the labor of installing the new meter. So that's codified in here too.
Do we have any sense of what that cost might be?
The labor-wise?
Yeah.
I'm thinking it's a buck fifty to two fifty in that range. It's not a big deal.
Is it just a straight time? Is that what it is, at so many dollars per hour, however long it takes?
Yeah, it's more like a minimal plumbing charge, meaning, like you know, it's like there's not a lot of labor involved in the actual work, it's just getting the man and his truck to the job, and then, you know, most plumbers have a minimum to come out and...
Who would be performing that task? It wouldn't be the same guys that are doing it now, they'll be gone, right?
Right, exactly. It would have to be some local plumber. In other words, we would have to have a plumber, not us, I mean, the customer would have to pay, yeah.
Okay, alright. And would, if, say, somebody who does not have the new meter right now says, okay, I'm ready to do this thing, would we then contact a plumber to get them over there? Or would they contact a plumber and then we would approve this plumber?
The second option is what I envision, it's like they get the plumber they want, and they could get the price they want then too, you know? We would need to approve him just that he's touching our water line and so forth, but anyway. And then for now, the one delicate subject, we'll talk about it now, is the $15 per quarter electrical power surcharge remains in effect. I'll explain two things. Steve's doing some research on the immediate power changes with the new wellfield upgrades and so forth. We're seeing some interesting trends. Like I said, the last bill was a hybrid of old analog, old defective meters, new efficient meters. We think the next quarter, we're going to really get an accurate read of what we're pumping, and then we can look at what we need dollar-wise from the system to pay its bills and the new number of what we're pumping, and we'll reconfigure the rate then. So what we added here was, summarize this sentence, page 1, "The village board may thereafter, by adoption of a fee schedule, amend the rates for water service to ensure financial stability in the water department." What that's getting at is, in my opinion, the surcharge will go away, but it's a cost of doing business, it'll still, it won't be a separate line item anymore, but it'll be computed into the gross costs of operating the water system. When we instituted it a year and a half, two years ago, is because we had that sudden appearance of a bill we had to pay, and it's a recurring bill. It's an energy supply bill from Central Hudson, and it continues, doesn't go away. So anyway, that's the overview. We won't vote on it right now, it's for a public hearing, it's more when we change the local law and the rates are codified in the law, we have to talk about it to the public, so. Any questions out there on that? Mr. George?
On the electrical part, would it be more feasible to make it part of the electric bill the village pays now? That would be more equitable across the board.
Not sure what you mean.
Well, we pay for lights, and the village probably pays for the building, separate water bill, power bill. If it's incorporated into the actual cost of the electric for the entire village, why you have to base it on volume?
I think the difference is, George, too, is that the streetlights and the building come out of our general fund account, and the electricity used for the water comes out of the water plant. So we could, it keeps them separate, you know, the two bills in charge, so we'll keep it also because they're two separate fund accounts, which I think kind of makes sense to keep them in their respective accounts.
Just throw it out as an option, the other way would be if you had to go into the volume, if somebody was using 10,000 gallons, we're using 1,000 gallons.
What? That's, I think we're saying, that's what will happen.
Yeah, I think that's what you're working on.
We'll take that, that cost, there's other costs, you know, all the different operating costs, the electric will get folded into it, and then recompute, yeah, so it'll be equitably... And right now, our rate, one thing I didn't explain is, I talked about the basic rate, the under 750 cubic feet, which is now 5,610 gallons. We're taking the next three, well, one, two, three, the next three bandwidths, meaning we charge a certain dollar rate above the 750 in the old cubic foot world, and then a second rate above that and a third rate. Those have all been converted to gallons and the new cents per gallon. And as you go up the ladder, you pay a little more per gallon, so essentially designed to reward less consumption. And it's tiered, in other words, you pay the base rate, and then if, if the guys up on, up here see it, like the next level up, 5,610 to 22,400, those numbers mimic our old cubic foot lines, and then you get charged that. If you're in the second, third tier up, you would pay the base rate, the lower rate for the first 22,400 gallons you've used, and then the next rate up. So it's, just for the public to know, it's .00241 cents per gallon, so it's two thousandths of a cent per gallon on the low rate. Then it goes up to .00321, so called three thousandths of a cent for the middle rate, and then four thousandths of a cent per gallon for the next rate. So it's, so the heavier users are paying, but that will happen, what you're saying, it's going to get put in the pool and then divided by the consumption.
It's, excuse me, it's four, it's four thousandths, we've got .00401, four thousandths?
Uh, four thousandths of a cent, yeah. And let's see, we're maintaining that same rule, where if you're a town or red hook customer in our water district, you just pay double rate, and that's the same as now. And really what we're saying, in this change, we're not increasing or lowering any rate, we're just codifying it to make it gallons and then pulling in tapping fees, things that were off in some other realms on pieces of paper, kind of pulling it in, so it's all focused. And when it comes to the regular meeting, we'll vote on it, but any questions from you guys?
Yeah, I noticed that on the second page, it stipulated in there the additional fee if they don't install their new water meter at 50, but they don't have the $100 for business on neither document.
Pardon me, I didn't follow the second part.
They don't have the $100 fee for business. They only have a $50 fee per quarter for, if you don't install your new meter.
That should be for residential customers.
Yeah. You don't have a business which we voted on for $100.
Okay, yeah, let's, okay, so 50 per quarter, we have to insert... I inserted some text there, did you guys all get that down there? We did vote when we were sending out the letter, you're saying relying on the second part of that letter.
Right.
Prefer to see that. I'm just looking at the list of unhooked meters. It's probably primarily residential, but does anybody have any objection to that? It's consistent with what we were doing before. Alright, so we'll read that out loud, but that being said, I'd say, is there a motion to close the public hearing on water code changes? Is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
Let's see, no parking. I guess I really shouldn't say 15 minutes, no parking, but...
15-minute parking.
This is something we've talked about at other meetings. We're looking at making a modification on Route 9 south, if you can picture the northwest corner there of 199 and Route 9. We're looking to try to get one spot that seems like it fits physically with signage and different things, where we wouldn't have to add any more posts or uprights or too much of things that amount to existing posts that sit there. The thought is, we're trying to get one spot that turns over a little quickly, more quickly than the two-hour spots. It's designed to make it short-term, like pickup, get in, get out, and keep moving for one spot. We've kicked around quite a bit amongst ourselves, and I think at one of our last Board meetings, wasn't a public hearing, but we talked about it in general. What we do is, with the two-hour parking, we're not sure that everybody's obeying that, but our PD does go out and check that periodically. We do get some anecdotal information that some of the businesses park their cars out on the street in front of their business all day, which, like I said last time, is counterproductive for them if they're trying to get customers to stop there. So we're trying to free up this one, one corner to see what we can do. And in my mind, what I've noticed is problematic at that corner. Some people try to make it a two-lane, right-turn lane there oftentimes, just because of the way it's laid out and so forth. Whereas if cars were parked there, it tends to keep it a little more one lane, which it should be. We, we're not really prepared to vote on this tonight in the main meeting, it's just to get some public comment on it and see where we go. It's not, not on the agenda for a vote tonight, but is there a public comment out there on that? George?
I still think it's a bad idea, if you're going to do it for one business, probably about half dozen businesses in the village, where people run in and pick up, you know, takeout order, would fit them also. But I just think that's just a dangerous corner to do it, because I think there's like 20-foot back, there's no parking. There is parking in the front, there's no parking over there because of the truck parking.
I didn't hear the last part.
I don't think there's parking up to the corner on that street, I think it's back about 10...
There's a 20-foot setback.
Yeah, there's a setback, and then, and this spot would be behind that, which is...
Behind the store, you're talking about.
Pardon me?
It won't even be in front of the store you're talking about.
Well, I think there's a little bit of a misperception, it's not necessarily for one store, it's not private parking for one store. It's, if I'm southbound, if I'm southbound, like I said last meeting, grab coffee, grab whatever I'm moving around the corner from. And we do, we're looking to experiment, I would use the word experiment, meaning we're not changing the whole area to 15 minutes and we're not putting a parking meter, it's nothing crazy, it's just, can we take a little calculated experiment there and see what It doesn't cost us anything, meaning a couple of signs and state permission. Would the PD be there 15 minutes and enforce it? No, I would rely on common sense and goodwill, you know?
You could sit right in the park bench in front of it and time it.
Yeah, nah, I mean, it's, we're not looking to go that level, it's more a goodwill type of thing where people, this one's 15 minutes and everything else is two hours. It is one spot. But anyway, thanks for your comment. I know at one of our workshops, we kicked it around, we're not necessarily all of the same mind either, it's, so, but I know it's, I think what this Board tries to do is look for solutions and gamble on some, maybe, we're not right all the time, but it could be worth a try and we'll always go back. But like I said, I'm not prepared to spend a lot of time or vote on it tonight, so I just want to get some more comment and see...
For the six-month test time on that?
A sunset clause? It's a, yeah, it's a thought, I don't know.
So if it's already there, if you don't vote on it, at that point, would you say that it's just a delay?
Yeah, we'd have to take signs down and things, but, yeah, quite frankly, I wanted to hear some public comment on a formal level, because it would also be a code change we have to put in our code book so the PD could enforce that one spot. I think I would leave it at that. Anybody up here want to say anything? Let's see, I have, hey, we're right about on, so is there a motion? I'd like to close that section of the public hearing, is there a motion to do so? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Let me get a glass of water, and we'll come back in two seconds for a meeting.
Hey, could you use your microphone? I'm having a hard time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Cameraman, could you hear me? I'm going to pull a wire. Can I sit here? Actually, I guess I can't get my drink of water. Why don't we stand and pledge to the flag and we'll get started?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, can you hear me? I don't know, maybe I need the microphone, like the other one down there in Jay's draw. On our agenda, we would move first to our clerks' minutes from two meetings, we had July 8th and then July 18th. So 8th was the formal meeting and 18th being the work... So eighth was the formal meeting and eighteenth being workshop meeting. Does anybody have any additions, alterations, or corrections to those? Hearing done, is there a motion to accept them as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
All favor? Let's see. Looks like another work product of the clerk here, treasurer, we have, we have your treasurer's report, please.
There we go. I just, before I start that, I have, uh, village taxes yet to collect, fifty-one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents. And the treasurer's report balances as of August fifth. General fund, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents. Water fund, forty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and fourteen cents. Trust and agency, fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. Materials management, five thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Petty cash, thirty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Village green, two thousand six hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents. Hard Scrabble, two thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Health insurance, two thousand five hundred and six dollars and sixty-eight cents. Capital projects, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Monthly expenses, general fund, three hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Water fund, eighteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-three cents. Trust and agency, fourteen thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. And materials management, four thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-seven cents. And I hope by the end of the week, AUD will be done, because Monday we're starting the, um, A-133 audit.
For those that think she's talking like Brent, that's, um, the AUD is the annual audit that the village has to go through. And this year, we switched from a, a long-term firm that was doing it for us to a, another firm, and it's taken a little longer, just, it's, it's a CPA firm and we're working through a lot of detail, and we did see some emails today, they have about five or eight more things they need from-
I cleared most of them up by four o'clock.
Did you? Okay. And overall, it's a good thing, it's, um, what that means is we're a much stronger audit than I think we ever had in the past, and it's, um, we've been working for a couple of years trying to get things turned around and played.
It's also a summer time vacation time, so.
Just a question I had, two things, I think, uh, last month, the tax on collected taxes was about a hundred and eleven thousand, so it came down quite a bit, yeah. And then, um, on the, uh, the expenses, we'll look at it more in depth, but three hundred and thirty thousand, that's a pretty big number.
I, well, I paid all the insurances and I paid the bond on the village hall.
Okay.
And, um, one of the police cars. So a lot, a lot of bond money went out this month.
Which is a good thing. What we do is, we budget for a twelve-month cycle, but some expenses come out early and they're done with for the year, so it's not a bad thing to pay a lot in one month, I just want everybody to be aware of that, it's, uh, if you're trying to average it, it doesn't always work out. Then, back to those acronyms, AUD is the village audit, and then the A-133, that has to do with the USDA project. What they do is, they look for a second audit, uh, to be sure all the money that they've moved through us went in the right direction and went to the right people. And, but it relies first on our own audit of our books, they take a lot of, first, a lot of their data, and then they work from that. And it's a good secondary test, so it's, uh, it's also the good news, it's within the administrative funding they give us, we're not paying out of our direct pocket, it's, it's in the grant loan project, so, um, and we went to a second firm on purpose, uh, we used, the CPA firm for AUD was the Sadorf firm out of, where they hide Park, Kipsey, somewhere down that way, and then, um, a firm out of Hudson, we, we went to bid on these things, and a firm out of, um, Hudson area, but they do have a storefront with a door name over here in the village, Patterson Koski is another CPA firm, they're doing the A-133. While we have Cindy, has the low-staff results come back yet? The firemen submitted their roster, but, um, what that is, we send the roster off to a, a funding entity and we find out how many qualify for what kind of money under the retirement low-staff funds. Let's see, Patrick, I see you're out there, do you wanna do a police report, or?
Yeah, he can, he has a very bad phone.
Okay, uh, for the month of July, gross number of incidents is a hundred fifty, one five three, a hundred fifty-three. Breaks down is ninety-four in the village of Red Hook, fifty-eight in the town, one in Tivoli. Of that, uh, we, secondarily, we have uniform traffic tickets, eighty-four, sixty-four in the village, includes some parking tickets, and then Town of Red Hook had twenty. Arrests were fourteen, breaks down Village of Red Hook, eight, Town of Red Hook, six. And, uh, originally, Patrick didn't think he could make it tonight, but during the week, maybe it was ten days ago now, a lot of boxes came into the police department. It's something Patrick had mentioned, um, historically, police departments do old-fashioned fingerprints with ink and, uh, things from the nineteen fifties, I guess, and sixties and seventies and eighties, um, and there was a trend, it's moved more digital like everything else, and the, but, the village was looking at, okay, how do we do that and stay within any semblance of a budget in the police department? And it was a factor, what, a year and a half ago, when it was, it looked like certain things would be mandated that we would have to have one. So Patrick went and found a grant, and you wanna talk a little bit about that, or?
Yeah, um, a couple years ago, Steve was gonna mandate that we have LiveScan. You know, LiveScan is just a computerized way of doing fingerprints. Uh, they take your finger, you kind of roll it on the computer, shows you on a screen, and automatically generates into the computer. You know, if you have somebody in the area that won't tell you their name, won't tell you their information, well, you would, you know, roll their fingerprints, and if they have been arrested before, their information instantly pops up. If you don't have that, there's no real way of finding out what, um, you know, who they are, who they truly are. So again, going back, they were gonna mandate, you know, a lot of PD, a lot of PD said there's no way we could, it was forty thousand dollars at a time, there's no way for somebody to pay for that kind of system. Um, over this past year, I've worked pretty hard trying to get a grant for, um, I recently got awarded the grant, we got that all done. After the ninety-five hundred dollar equipment grant we got granted, I went in for the LiveScan grant, we got that. It's not forty thousand now, it's probably around twenty-seven, twenty-eight thousand, you know, two years later. Uh, but we got awarded it, I got all the equipment, um, everything that comes with it, so we should be up and running in a few weeks. Once you get everything together, um, you know, our tech guy and their tech guy get together, they put everything, they program it in the computer, and we're good to go, so we'd have to spend a dollar to get, uh, all that equipment, so.
Yeah, it was really interesting, I helped them carry the boxes upstairs, there's ranges from digital cameras in there, it looks like they spoke-
Yeah, it's everything, you know, all the cameras, the computers, the printers, the stands, uh, tripods, and everything you need with it. That's my biggest goal, is, you know, I understand we're gonna work on living a budget, but there's a lot of money out there if you go after it. So that's my goal, is to get as much federal and state money as I can, you know, get what I can, uh, at the degree I'm in.
Thank you. That's the police report. Let's see, Steve, you have your water report there?
Uh, their structure system was flushed, uh, beginning on July twenty-ninth, uh, by opening hydrants in sequence throughout the district. Uh, two, uh, direct interviews were held subsequent to our PD submission, firms interviewed were YALZ and VRI. Options, qualifications, certifications are still, still being analyzed. Uh, average daily consumption for July was two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, one-hundred-and-nineteen gallons. Uh, one hundred gallons of hydro, hydrochloride were added to the system over the month. Uh, the leak detection, uh, work found two leaking hydrants which will be repaired at the valves, uh, below ground. Quarterly water bills were issued after the July eighth reading. This billing sequence has a combination of the new meters, reading in gallons, and the final reads from the old meters in cubic feet at most locations. So a formula was created to combine billing in cubic feet and gallons on the same bill. This is the conversion factor seen on the bills, all new bills will be in gallons consumed. Last remaining meter installation date is set for Saturday, August tenth. If you have not booked your change out, you need to get it done by that date. Call the toll-free number for the contractor, National Marketing, or Village Hall to get the number. Uh, bacteriological samples were taken and sent to the lab.
If I could interject one thing, a few residents have brought in an unsolicited mailing, I don't know if anybody else got them, it's from a company, I didn't bring them with me here, but, um, they, they seem to be, it's trying to sell a form of insurance for the service line which runs from your curb valve to your, inside the house valve, which, under code, is the homeowner's responsibility, but they're four feet below grade, they don't freeze, uh, trees fall on them, trucks run over them, they don't, they don't, in other cells, break. Uh, we're not sure how they picked Red Hook to work it, is it a coincidence that we're in a water project and they see signs on the street, you know, are they targeting something where people are thinking more about their water lines now than ever? But from my personal perspective, there's no need, we're not recommending it, they're not authorized, and these things don't break that offer, you know, it's not worth it. I think it's like eighty, ninety dollars a year, they say, um, premium, and, um, it's sort of like a service maintenance contract they're trying to sell you, but if, if you get one or a call and you feel harassed, just come in and drop it off here, let us know. But it's nothing we're endorsing and nothing that we have indicated to anybody that we would think they sent out such a letter, so I'm not sure where they get the names from or what they do.
I've had a number of people contact me, ask me, walk up and ask me about it, and, uh, first they wanna know who they are, second they wanna know, is the village part of it? And I said, no.
That's, it's-
No, the answer.
Right, it's sort of like buying a warranty on your washing machine, it's something, but your washing machine will break quicker than your service line would ever break, so, you know, just a thought out there. Let's see, Steve, you wanna go to facilities there, or did you have something?
Yeah, uh, Time Warner, uh, came in two weeks ago, and, uh, they ran the fiber in from the pole into the room downstairs, they're getting ready for installation, which will happen momentarily, hopefully momentarily. On the pump station, uh, they currently use the existing line there, we're going to have another line installed out there for their use, for the water's use, and revert the, uh, number they're using back to dam. And of note, for all people that work here at the village, in the village hall, please, no equipment, nothing in that room where all the phone equipment is and computer equipment and everything else. Where all that is down there in the corner, where the old monitors and everything are, that's exactly where Time Warner's gonna put their equipment, we gotta get it out of there, and we can't have it there anymore. And the other thing, uh, in the emails that I did with you and Rich about the APC backup, uh, he's got, uh, he's got capacity in his existing units down there.
Oh, really?
That we don't have to purchase another one for the Time Warner installation.
You know, what this was, we have certain backup, but at first we thought with the new Time Warner connections that before the generator fully came on, there might be enough lag where we had to have a quick response APC, um, and, um, but what Steve is saying is that our current equipment is enough to pick up this new-
Right.
-rig. That's good, it wasn't real expensive, but it was just-
No, we were talking, grant told maybe two hundred dollars, but we won't need to spend that much.
Um, the stored equipment down there, a lot of it's electronic, is there something that's pleased that we have to worry about hard drives and things like that, is there anything?
Nothing, no, I don't think any of that equipment is ours, I can hold a check, but I don't think that is ours.
Maybe next day or two, it's all locked in there, but we'll, uh, okay. Let's see, Steve was showing me, he's doing some research, and it goes to the discussion about water we had and the electric rate. We're seeing some early indication on some spreadsheets he's running that, um, the new pumps and the variable frequency drives and different things, um, maybe having an already noticeable effect on saving us energy over there, it looks like, um, certain of the consumption is dropping, and it seems to begin right around when the project goes live, so it's kind of interesting, it's not huge, huge dollars, but it's, it'll help offset other things, and it's like the change to Time Warner, it's a little bit here and there helps, so it's, um, so Steve's still working on that project, and we'll, uh, talk about that, and you're also working a streetlight project, you wanna talk about that a little bit, or want me to talk about it, or?
You can.
Okay, same thing, he's, pardon me?
I'm just running.
He's doing a spreadsheet where, looking at the streetlight count, and what we do, we, the tariff that governs, we, we rent the whole Cobra head from Central Hudson, and then we power it by consumption with Central Hudson also as the provider of the, the wire, and then we buy from a co-op, which is the Hess Energy Group is who we actually buy our power from right now. And, uh, that was a savings, about two years ago, we moved off straight Central Hudson to an outside supplier, but, long story short-
Not for streetlights, streetlights are strictly Central Hudson's because they own them.
Okay, so, so we don't get to use that other rate for that, okay. So, um, what we're finding is, now that the Fortis slash Central Hudson merger is apparently over, I think it might be time to call the new team, whatever they're gonna be called, and say, hey, remember we wanted to get LED streetlights in the village, be nice, and let's talk about it again. Uh, what he's finding is, we, which we found last time, is we have to rent these Cobra heads, it's a tariff, there's really no competition, it's just they provide them, you buy them, or rent them rather, and, um, so we'll see if there's some new options, another project he's working on with spreadsheets there. Uh, Jay, you're kind of quiet down here, but I guess we'll put trustee Norris up next.
Okay.
We'll put trustee Norris up first.
I'm just, I'm just saving it all up.
Okay.
Back and forth. Okay, we'll start with materials management. Uh, for the month of July, we sold three thousand ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents in garbage tags, and we paid out one thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. We had thirteen point thirty-three tons of garbage and seven point eight-six tons of single stream recycling. Library, I did not get their numbers, um, but I personally, my daughter has been going through some of their library programs, and their programs are fantastic, so I just wanted, I don't have anything official to report, other than check out their programs, because they're free. Um, events, we screened Back to the Future on July nineteenth. Last year when we did it, it was too cold, this year it was too hot, maybe next year will be like our Goldilocks year, and it'll be just right. Uh, we only had about thirty people come out, um, to watch it, but I think they had fun, um, it was one of the hottest nights of the year. Um, thanks again to Rhinebeck Rentals for donating the screen, um, and there were a bunch of local restaurants who had takeout dinner specials that I personally partook in, um, so thank you for that. Um, over the weekend, we had the Second Annual Community Concert in Potluck with music by Grass Fed Bluegrass. I think it was sixty to seventy people, it was really a good time, the weather was perfection, I don't think it could have gotten any better. Um, I think we're gonna try to do this every year, I think more and more people seem to like it and had a great time, so I think that's now gonna be an official annual thing. Um, moving on to our big, uh, event of the year is Hard Scrabble Day, um, we did do the, um, Indiegogo internet crowdfunding campaign, it was a new thing for us, we just decided, let the heck, let's try it. We got five hundred and ninety-five dollars from that, so thank you to everyone who participated, you know, who participated in that, we really appreciate it. Um, we also did get a direct donation, um, from a resident for fifty dollars, so every little bit helps. Um, we encourage anyone who's interested in contributing to the Hard Scrabble campaign, um, to, you can make a check to the Hard Scrabble Community Association, bring it into the village. Uh, Hard Scrabble Day will be Saturday, September twenty-first, uh, we're working hard on it with vendors and entertainment to be named, and, uh, the parade, uh, the kids' Scrabble area's shaping up nicely, um, there's a Girl Scout troop that's going to take over it, um, as part of their, I don't know if it's their silver award or their bronze award, but some award, uh, so they'll have different stations with literacy and drama and animals and that sort of thing, um, and there's gonna be a clothing swap, first clothes of all sizes, kids through adults, so you can, you know, start purging your closets and find some new clothes. That's all I have at the moment.
One thing, as Jen said, Saturday, we had the bluegrass at Abrams Park, and then tomorrow night, Tuesday, the Rhinebeck Legion bands hitting town, so we quickly converted our roadside stand sign and our Abrams Park stand signs yesterday, me and myself, I rode my bike around and changed, show closed on Saturday, and we changed the, what do you call it, the marquee. Show closed on Saturday, and we changed the, what do you call it, the marquee to Rhinebeck Legion. It's a free concert, we take half credits, we provide the park and the, some of the PR, but the town actually pays something for the band, so it's, we try not to take all the credit, but it's a nice little event, and it's, you bring your own chair, and they're great, it's a great summer event, too. The weather's supposed to be good tomorrow night, too. So there's no potluck with that one, it's just listen to the music. I think, now, Mr. Trapp, are you ready to work?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Got a few things here tonight. Trustee, you know, that connects to planning and zoning also has to connect to the code enforcement officer at the village, and part of that connection is reporting sites that may require some upgrades to be in compliance, and Ed and I usually talk about these things. I mean, I'm not going to talk about specific sites, but we, we, Ed and I, you know, and anybody that feels like there's something that is out of compliance should bring it up to us, which Ed and I do with Sam. We write letters to him every once in a while and urge him to go visit several things, and some of them, you know, it's a matter of buildup of trash and signage, or whether it's work on a house that has lingered for a very long time, and buildup of trash and maybe unsafe conditions. And so these are the sort of things that we try and make sure that are kept up with. For the most part, Sam does, I mean, he's got a lot going on. As I read the report here, you'll see how many inspections he's done this past month, so he has been busy. One of the things that sort of bridges over between our zoning revisions committee and this connection with Sam is that sometimes applications will come to the boards, and the applications may not be that complete. And we, you know, our discussion at our last meeting on Wednesday was that it's sort of an imposition on the board, and maybe not doing the greatest service for the applicant either to, to tell them that it's time to go to the board when they may not have all of the information that they need for the board to make a complete determination. And so in other words, this applicant comes to the board with everything that they think they need, and then the board can't make a determination, then they have to come back the next month. And it's a little bit, you know, distressing, because, let's face it, most of the folks that come to the board have never been to one of these boards before, and they're terrified when they come here, and it's stressful enough to come once, and then you find out that you didn't do it right, and then you have to come back, and it just makes it better for everybody if we can get this process down tailored very tightly, which sort of seams into one of the things we're doing at the zoning revisions. David Pearson is working on the applications. He's been talking with Lara about what we have and looking at other municipalities to try and add an instructional sheet, or a page or two, whatever's necessary, to make sure that when somebody picks up an application for a use variance or an area variance, that they understand everything that they need. And while a lot of that information is in the zoning booklet, some of the people may or may not have that, they may not have access to Ecode 360, they may not, you know, they may just miss that. So if all of these items are stapled to every application for either an area variance, special permit, use variance, or just a site plan application, I think it's going to make the process go a little faster and make the people feel just a shade more comfortable when they come in front of the board. With that being said, I'll just fold right into the zoning revisions committee. George, who I've spoken before, had the dubious honor of trying to merge the R-ten and R-20,000 districts. He's gotten a good handle on it, and he's given me all of his information that he has handwritten. Not a computer guy, so he, this never crashes, right, George?
No, it doesn't.
So, and I'm inputting that into the computer so that I'm, what I'll end up with is a, an entire zoning code section that is revised in the, in the track changes on Word, so it'll be in red, all the changes, the deletions and the comments will be in red. And in addition to that, I've gone through basically front to back in the entire code and tabbed everything that appears to be. There are a couple of typos in there, there are a couple of clarifications, and so I'm just going through and I'm tabbing them all, and I'm hitting those as I go through with George's information as well. Sign ordinance has been revised, and we're going to basically, it's a long process. I mean, you know, the guys that were working with me here, it's hard work, never under, you know, you'd never really understand just how detailed it is when you try to change a code, because one line of code changing here, you have to look through five different sections of code to make sure that you followed it back through. So, so we're working very carefully on that, not trying to rush everything, because then you come up with a code that's, you know, still not, doesn't make you happy, and it has ambiguities in, which makes the board's job even, even more difficult. So that being said, we're still ongoing. We're working, you know, every couple of weeks we get together and we bring a ton of stuff and talk about perfect weather, Jen. We sat outside this last time, and it was really nice to sit outside and do this thing. On my way in, I saw the hooks from home box out here, it's almost full, that's looking really good. I don't know how it, when I used to work in the village, I would get it down there, I don't know how it gets down there now, but we're probably pretty well loaded up, and we could take it down. But I just wanted to, my next little item here is that we had talked about the environmental site assessment that we were looking at to do on the green lot over there. My personal part of the report is about fifty percent. I have photographs that I folded in, my site reconnaissance, but this is the information that you get from Environmental Data Resources, EDR. This is what their report looks like, and it's called, well, there are three different sections. There's the radius map with GeoCheck, and then you have sandboard maps, and you have decade aerials in there, which take it back to, I think, nineteen eleven, maybe? So you can kind of see the history of what's happened in the four corners. And there are a great many spill databases in here. That's one of the issues, is that you do an environmental site assessment so that if you buy a piece of property, you don't buy something that you have to spend money to clean up later on down the line. So being adjacent to where petroleum has been dispensed for quite some time, I think it was prudent in the village to take a look at this if the village is considering purchasing it. And I think you might be surprised how many spills of various magnitudes were reported in and around the area. This will be, you know, I'll leave this with you, but I'll need to take it back to finish my report because I pull information out of here from mine, so you just want to just glance just for funsies there. Onto the prepared monthly reports for planning and zoning. Sam issued eleven building permits this past month, he issued one certificate of occupancy. He issued fifteen certificates of compliance. Two municipal searches were conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop work orders, no court appearances, no fire inspections or complaints, but general inspections he conducted twenty-three. And, you know, you figure each one takes half an hour, forty-five minutes according to the complexity of it, so that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of inspecting here. July eleventh, the planning board had a meeting, and they had one item of business assigned application, and July of two thousand thirteen, there was no agenda for the ZVA, so no meetings. But this past month, the grand total tendered by the building department was four thousand fifty-five dollars. So we're, you know, we're cruising along. Some of these projects are coming back to life, there are a couple of, you know, items that, it's looking pretty good. The mayor, I think, for the most part, that's it for me.
Thank you.
You bet.
Speaking of projects coming to life, it looks great that Noelwood Commons, have you driven by there the past few days?
Yes.
They've got framing going up on the third building and starting to look like something instead of a derelict.
Broke through with light, it's kind of nice.
Yes, yes. It's nice. They took the hit in two thousand eight, and now things are bumping back up, and they're on the front of the curve a little bit, but I think it's looking good.
It's going to be a beautiful project when it gets up and running, I think.
One thought, Jay, when you were going through, you did mention Sam did some inspections. They look to be building permit, though, like their final rough plumbing, footings, so that it phases in.
You bet, you bet. Of all sorts, actually, you know, whether final inspections, most of them, I think, were final inspections. There were some insulation, framing and footing inspections, and these, these general inspections are mandated by the building code. At certain points, the building inspector is supposed to inspect, and usually the builder will call in twenty-four hours ahead and give you the notice, and he'll say, my footing's ready, come check out the rebar, and then he'll say, okay, and then the guy pours the concrete the next day after Sam does his inspection.
Where I was going to head, venue one category, fire inspections, that's a section twelve oh three work. That's an annual requirement on most of those?
Yes. I mean, and he does some of them. Let me see.
This month shows zero, but I just wonder if we should schedule that, because we're in August already, so.
He tries to do them in groups a lot of times. When he works in the village center, he'll work, and where there's maybe a commercial downstairs and two or three, you know, apartments upstairs, he'll go through one building at a time, or two adjacent buildings at a time to maximize his effort there. So in some months, you won't see any, and the next month, you'll see ten of them, so he tries to cluster them.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Let's see. Looks like we're ready now for Deputy Mayor Brent to watch it.
Excuse me.
Brent, sit.
You're okay.
Okay. She has to get the tape, she's not leaving us.
You're okay.
Okay.
You're okay?
Okay.
Okay. Oh, sorry, with the village screen committee. The village screen committee is related budget account, our follow-ups, community dedication, we have a balance of four thousand dollars, shake fee contractual, four thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and the village screen community checking, committee checking account is two thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents. There were no village screen leads held during the month of July. Brendan Kehoe, who sits on the committee, on behalf of the village screen committee, attended the New York State Urban and Community Foresteries Council's annual release conference held in Utica, New York on July eighteenth to nineteenth, two thousand thirteen. She'll read back a lot of information, too, on helpthevillagepeace.com. And residents and businesses, this was something that was put in our newsletter with our water bill. Resident and businesses can purchase a dedication plaque that can say the honor of, in memory of, et cetera, for the village benches that were recently installed, and these are for sale for a hundred and twenty-five dollars apiece. Proceeds from the sale of the dedication plaques will be deposited in the dedicated village screen committee checking account. This is money only to be used by village screen and not rolled into the general fund, and it's used to pay for the cost and installation of the plaques and village community enhancement projects. So we've already had a couple takers on this, and it's a great way to memorialize or honor a friend or a family member. People interested in doing this can contact Sydney at the village building, and she'll get ahold of me, and we'll go ahead and order the plaques, but... The village Red Hook Highway Department monthly report. The village highway department is currently conducting its lawn debris and brush pickup program, and this will continue to, and end during the fall brush and lead pickup. That's the big course at the end of the year. And residents are reminded to place lawn debris and brush curbside on the first and third Monday of each month for removal by the highway department. And we're asking that you limit the size of the brush piles to six foot by six foot by six foot, with tree limbs no larger than eight inches in diameter. Please do not include any tree trunks or debris from a property or a tree that was removed on your own property. These are the responsibility of the property owner. Tremings, prunings, that kind of stuff will handle, but when you take the whole tree down, it can't handle the big stumps. The village received an estimate on July fifteenth from Frank Bosberg and Sons to install a new thirty-six inch by forty-two inch by forty-eight inch catch basin and cast and curb frame grave to the corner of West Market and Church Street. Project will also include repair of all disturbed areas, including sidewalk replacement. Project cost estimate of seven thousand six hundred and eighty dollars will be deducted from the maintenance of street, street maintenance general fund account. So that's one of the projects we have going on this summer. Estimates also have been received to repair the T-11, which is the ninety-six International Dump Truck, from Ben Funk Incorporated on July twenty-fourth. Replacement of various transfer case seal, engine seals, transmission seals, parts of labor will cost the minimum two thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. There's a lot of rust on that truck, and I don't know the exact cost until they get into it, but that's the minimum cost, so we're hoping it stays real close to that. Now, Firehouse Lane will be repaved in mid-August, and the Gorman Group will provide the service with the assistance of the village and town highway departments, part of a shared services group. The total cost, including pipette type A and paved place service treatment type B, which is the Nova chip, is forty-one thousand thirty-two dollars, based on estimates received on July tenth. This project will be funded from the fiscal year two thousand thirteen or fourteen, New York State DOT Consolidated Highway Improvement Program, or CHIPS. And the remaining balance will be deducted from maintenance of streets, general fund accounts, so the remaining balance we figure is about eight hundred dollars on that, off of forty-one thousand dollar project. So that was pretty good. Scrap metal was sold on June fourth, and reimbursements were received on July second. Revenue generated by the sale was three hundred and sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents, which is our total revenue this fiscal year. I believe we have a couple more dumpsters ready to go, so this will be a good year for our scrap metal program. Since the inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September two thousand seven, fourteen thousand five hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward purchasing tools and equipment for the Red Hook Village Highway Department. Anyone interested, residents or businesses, can call Dan at the Highway Garage at seven five eight eight six hundred, or Village Clerk at seven five eight one zero eight one. And the highway department will also assist property owners by picking up scrap metal on the ground. Please take advantage of this good program and help the village. Inter municipal task force and the Red Hook Infrastructure Monthly Report. Red Hook Sewer Project, the village with assistance of village engineer C.T. Mail, is preparing a New York State Consolidated Funding Application for our New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and Environmental Facilities Corporation Wastewater Infrastructure Planning Grant. Funding is being requested to continue the water quality study and the prepared engineers' report. The water study and engineers' report, once completed, will be submitted for scoring and inclusion in the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Intended Use Plan. Placement on the IUP or intended use plan determines eligibility for municipal sewer district capital funding opportunities. On the water project, a meeting was held on July tenth of the Red Hook Village Building to review the progress, sign and submit reimbursement requests, review the status of the work of Phase One of the Red Hook Village Wellfield Improvement and Water Meter Replacement Project. Funding opportunities and procedures for Phase Two of the water project were also discussed. As we already went through in our public hearing, Phase Two will include improvements to the water distribution system for the southwest quadrant of the village. The three twenty-eight million dollar project may be eligible for USDA Rural Development Loan at a rate of two point seven five percent interest for a thirty-eight year period. Resolution, resolution authorization Mayor Blundell, the signed documents was passed at the trustees workshop on July eighteenth, and a public hearing was held just before this meeting, to solicit public comments on the resolution to proceed. The current status of Phase One, the wellfield improvement project, includes capacity testing of the current wells. A transformer in the pump house is scheduled to be replaced in August of two thousand thirteen. A transformer is part of the variable frequency drive for the pumps. A recently installed scaler meter that monitors the water level in the wellfield storage tank was replaced on July twenty-ninth, this is also part of the project. The meter was not properly reading the water level in the storage tank. The cost of these testing procedures and parts replaced with it is covered with Phase One funding. The current status of the Phase One Water Meter Replacement Project includes installing an additional forty meters to their last, last week in July. I guess we have about, what, thirty-nine, you said, additional meters to be replaced. The last date, this has been mentioned before, but this word's repeating, the last date for replacement is covered by Phase One. The last date for replacement, as covered by Phase One funding, is August 10th, 2013, which is a Saturday, I believe. So, anybody who can't open their houses up for these, switching over to new meters, they're available to come on Saturday to help you out. Residents and businesses who have not participated are encouraged to schedule an appointment with national metering as soon as possible. Failure to do so will result in an additional fee of $50 per quarter for residential customers and $100 per quarter for commercial and business customers, and this will be taxed to your water bill. The village, Reddick Village Water Distribution System leak tech survey was conducted on July 18th. The survey revealed that two fire hydrants, one on Schism Circle and one on Glen Ridge, had been detected. I believe these have been repaired already. And no leaks were found on any of the Reddick Village water pipes, so that was good news. The intermunicipal task force met on July 12th, 19th, and 26th at the Reddick Town Building. The task force reviewed the status of the proposed Reddick Town zoning amendments regarding scenic roads, historic preservation, and highway road specifications. The task force measured Reddick Village residential streets on July 26th as a reference for establishing and revising the current specifications, specifically for the high-intensity residential development of the Reddick Town Traditional Neighborhood District.
Hey, Brent, before you go to your next phase, Jay, we have a question for you. We have one of our part-time highway folks. We have, working on some streetscape beautification and so forth.
Yes.
We thought we'd have him pull a couple of pavers here and there, miscellaneous something, pavers. What was the technical term of the packing material? It was a, you had a high-tech word one day. We could find it again. I don't want to put you on the spot.
As soon as you said that, I knew what to say, and I blanked right out. I do have a part, a container of product in my car.
Yeah, I remember you showed it to us.
I called John Los on that.
Oh, which one now?
On the paver. You're talking about the sandwich, the papers? Papers? Yes, he got it at Harrington's.
All right, so we're trying to track down this special under-the-paver leveling compound.
I will break it in after the meeting.
Okay. Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, but.
That's all right.
We were talking about it the other day. We said, yeah, Jay came up with this. But, so, but the good part is, is we did a lot of project work on this last summer, but there's still a few more spots to do, so we thought we'd put our guy on a smaller scale. He could just work on it.
I, just while you are saying, I had a conversation with John Waste's guys, and they said, "I couldn't believe it, man. I want to do all the work we can in the village of Reddick." I said, "Why?" He said, "We were working out in front of J. and J. Deli, and this lady said, 'Oh, my God, this is great. Thank you so much. Here's a $50 gift certificate for dinner.'" So, they came in and had lunch.
Whoa. Yeah, it looks good there, too. That was one of our problem areas that we addressed early on.
And we're currently, as you noticed, some of the people who have noticed that the village parks a lot is fewer weeds growing in it now. It looks pretty good. There's other things. We're gonna start de-weeding. There's a lot of weeds around the sidewalks and curbs that don't need dry soon, and I keep this guy busy. So, I guess that there's some things that we didn't get repaired during the last round of grants for sidewalk improvements, and so he'll be doing these little things. And I think that'll, that'll help the village out quite a bit. I think I was telling that before.
You were. You just had to go to your.
A big one. The Reddick Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are liaison city committee. We're not actually members. A meeting was held on July 25th at the Reddick Village Building. The following items were discussed: the Public Relations Campaign, EDC newspaper column. Todd Baywright wrote the first in a series of articles that will regularly appear in The Observer. The articles will focus on improving existing businesses and encouraging new businesses to locate in the village and town of Reddick. EDC is currently reviewing resumes of prospective new members. Anyone interested, you can contact Chris Close at the Town Building. The status of proposed CBS on the former IGA site was discussed, and status of new businesses considering to locate in the commercial sub-district of the Reddick Town TND were also discussed. There were no monthly meetings of the Community Preservation Fund and Farmland Preservation Advisory Committee, the Reddick Town Zoning Review Committee, the Reddick Town Village of Tivoli and Village of Reddick Shared Services Committee, the Reddick Green Business Challenge Climate Smart Communities Committee. So, it was a nice, quiet month for me, to sit on all these committees. There was a Reddick Library Children's Learning Garden Committee held on July 19th at the Reddick Library, and items discussed included landscape and planning, mural, trees, planting barrels, use and programming of the garden, fences, cable and seedings, construction work and publicity. On the fundraising arm of it, the total estimated cost for this garden is $17,000, and a balance of approximately $650 remains to be acquired. So, any resident or businesses interested in donating can contact Loretta Campania of the Reddick Public Libraries. And Reddick together, there was no meetings that I was aware of this month, so.
We knew.
Again, a very quiet month on shared services, so that's all right.
Just on the library, on the fundraising, that $17,000 is all fundraised, right? No, we're just not, there's no direct expenses. Okay. Looks like we can move to regular business. The first thing, item one, budget adjustments. It's rather boring, mundane, but good news. Brenton's report talked about repaving and some dollars. Prior CHIPS use were always about, what, $31,000, $32,000, somewhere in that range? Right. I get the big picture. He's got the fine numbers there. We work well together that way. So, the good news is, the state is throwing a little bit more money to the local municipalities under the CHIPS program. Our new allocation is $40,231.62. So, to be proper in our budget, when we were doing it in March, when we have our deadlines, we didn't know that that was firmly coming through. We had some inclination or indications, but it has happened. So, to be technically correct, what we need to do is take the revenue line, $3501 CHIPS, to up to that $40,231.62. And then what we do commensurately on the other side, the expense side, it's a budget line where Brent repairs highways on your highway department. That expense line is 5110.3 is what I have here. Is that on? Does that carry forward in the typing rate?
I remember 0.3.
Yeah, okay.
Just, just kind of, we were, we received verification back in January 2013 that our state allocation would be the $31,000 mark, and it wasn't until July 24th, which was a couple months after we passed the budget, then we received verification that indeed that allocation had gone up. So, it was about an $8,000 increase, which is a pretty good, substantial amount of money. So, we're very happy about that. That's about 20% increase, right?
10.3, yeah. It's about 20%. So, like I said, it's overall good news, but we just have to log it in on the revenue side and the expense side. I'm sure we'll spend it somewhere on highway, which is a good thing.
I think Firehouse Lane gets it this year.
Yeah, well, but Firehouse Lane would be, yeah, it's this current year. Okay. So, what I would need is just a motion to do that transfer and correction, to make the budget read right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see. Water rate conversion, local law. This is what we talked about before in the public hearing, where I was referencing the details of it, and we had public input and comment, and board comment. I don't think I'll rehash all that. Most of you all were here for that. So, we're essentially codifying the fact that our new meters read in gallons, whereas our old meters read in cubic feet. We think that's a proper and modern change to do, but our code needs to reflect it, so when we bill folks, there's a basis for our billing. And then we pulled in some other line items of costs. When we fill swimming pools, when we tap mains for customers, and some miscellaneous customer costs. And we codified what a few folks read out about those meters that are not changed out by the end of August. There's going to be a surcharge on those accounts. And we went through it. Probably the best thing to do. Clerk, do you feel like reading this?
Really?
Or, I think we should read it out loud. I inserted a date here that you need to know, that one.
15. Resolution 15-2013. Whereas attached Chapter 195 Water Rates Introduced by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reddick on 7/25/2013, whereas a public hearing was held on August 5th, 2013, at 7:00 PM at the Village Hall, 7467 South Broadway, Reddick, New York. Notice of said hearing duly published and at which time all interest parties had an opportunity to be heard. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reddick here on 24 determines that this action is a Type II action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it enacted by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Reddick, the following amendment to Chapter 195, Part II Water Rates as follows. Water rates, general provisions, Section 195-26, scheduled rates. In order to continue to operate the village water department at a level that is acceptable and in compliance with the New York State and Dutchess County Department of Health requirements and provide the necessary level of maintenance, we set forth the following rates to reflect the meter conversion from cubic feet to gallons in consumption, and one with the other fees needed codification. The rates set forth below shall become effective for the billing quarter commencing October 1st, 2013. The village board may thereafter, by adoption of the fee schedule, amend the rates for water service to ensure financial stability in the water department. The charge, I'll read the water usage in gallons, and then the charge. Up to $5,610, including meter, will be the minimum charge of $45. Senior rate, $38. $5,610 up to $22,440 is .0241 per gallon.
Put two zeros in. .0 is the charge.
$22,440 up to $37,400, .00321 per gallon. $37,400 up to unlimited .00401 per gallon. And the town residents are doubled. Be doubled. Swimming pool for the residents, flat rates, $6,000 gallons, $200. $12,000 gallons, $400. $24,000 gallons, $800. $30,000 gallons, $1,000. Tapping fee, which is on the application, is $2,500. Tapping with road cutting, crossing involvement, $3,000. Customer request to turn off and on, $25. Location of water lines requested by owner, $50. Water meter read requested, $25. Customers not in compliance with a new meter installed by August 30th, 2013 will be substituted additional fee of $50, and businesses, $100 per quarter to allow us to pay an increased cost of manual readings, erroneous equipment factors, and secondary bill computation. In addition, when customers do change out the meter after August 30th, 2013, the labor for installing the new meter will be added cost to the property owner. The $15 per quarter electrical charge, power surcharge remains in effect on all accounts. This amendment shall take effect immediately upon the following in the Office of State, Secretary of State, and the courts with Section 27 of Municipal Home Rule Law, dated August 5.
Thank you. So, like we said, that explains word for word what we talked about in the public hearing. Most of those things we brought up at the public hearing, too. Is there a motion on this?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, in line with the other public hearing on Phase Two water potentialities. We do have to publish something. It's just a public intent statement that would go in the papers we work with as our official papers. We have the text and the wording for you, Cindy. It's, we did it for Phase One. Again, it's a statement of intent, but just to keep the word out there. Is there a motion to approve and publish that? Let's see, public intent statement? I heard there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, one official thing here. This is July, like Brent was saying, a lot of people on vacation. So too in August. I'm thinking, for a few reasons, I'd like to, originally, I thought we'd cancel our August workshop, but we do have some work pending on the block grant for the wellfield improvements. Looks like we might be best served by having a meeting August 29th, only because our September meeting will not be until September 8th because of the holiday on Monday. So, or September 9th, I guess it should be. Two plus seven is nine. So, it'd be September 9th. So, I'm thinking we, we should do a workshop August 29th, because we've put an RFP out for the block grant piece of that brush pile wellfield project, and it's returnable in the 23rd timeframe of August, and we need some time to look it over. And a group workshop would be a good time before a regular meeting. Sort of folks around for the 29th? As many as we can get, you know, it's.
I'm not, but.
Just to back up a little bit, the RFP is for our proposals for engineering services for wells number five and six rehabilitation improvement project for the Village of Reddick. And issue date today, August 5th. Submission date is August 23rd. And I believe on the 29th will be opening the Osby Award in the contract.
So, the workshop meeting to look them over, and generally, the folks that did often show up, too. Anyway, so, is there a motion to move the meeting from normally the 15th to the 29th of August?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks. Two more things I thought I'd talk about, and then we'll go to the board. But, I met last Friday, which isn't that long ago now. Today's only Monday, with Dutchess County Chris Barkley. He's Shared Services Coordinator. We sat, and he gave a county presentation on what they can help us with across the board, from things such as printing large reports to ordering certain supplies. They have a heating oil cooperative program, consolidated lease programs. So, we went through, and quite a few things interested us. One was already acted on wheat by through WB Mason, and we were able to, piggyback is the term, on the county's purchasing power. We still order, and we still get deliveries here. So, we got that set immediately. They'll save us, we were getting a good deal before, but it's a little more of a deal, so it's a good thing. And then, they do, like I say, offer some printing options on major projects. It wouldn't be 10 or 20 copies or something if we're doing hundreds, like say, Jesus, what do you need? Say something has to go out, or we need several sets of copies on large, large scale. And we also put a pitch in for when they retire certain vehicles. Maybe if they're low mileage enough or something, we could somehow repurpose them to our police department and see if there's something where we get something that's coming off relatively clean and relatively low miles, would it be worth it for us to look at? So, they told us they'd keep an eye out for that. Wouldn't be free, but it might, it'd be something good. They're trying to pitch us still on Dutchess delivery, which we've talked about a little bit. It's, we would maintain our own website, but if there were certain messages more on the emergency level where they could help get it out to the, especially younger generation, where everybody wants hitting their cellphone as soon as something happens. You know, an example might be, we had the cooling center opened up here, what, two weeks ago now? If, the thrust for us is, how do you get the word out? We put a sign out front, which is the good old-fashioned way, but how do you, how else do we do? We put it up on our website, but do the people that really needed to have a computer and a website familiarity, you know, it's maybe not. But then again, you know, the county, like I said, they've got this site, but it still, I think, depends on the tech savvy folks who, you sign up for it. You don't get it automatically. You get messages as needed. The two downsides are, one, there's a pretty hefty signup fee, and then there's also an annual fee, which right now, in my mind, still don't make it quite worth doing for the things we come up against. So, we'll have to think about it, but, you know, right now, it's, we're not budgeted for it this year, but it looks like the trend for the future, but they're kind of pushing hard on that over here. I talked about the heating oil co-op, but we buy our heating oil through state contract prices and so forth, so we're really already at the lowest. That's for the building here. I asked, "Hey, is that a co-op for residents to join in?" But they said, "No, it's got to be the municipal building." And we buy our fuel for our lease. And we buy our fuel for our lease cars through another state farm price level, but it's really well managed. It's, it really details the consumption and who's buying it and time, it gives a great management report. Whereas what they would offer for fuel, we would have to go out to the three oh eight Sheriff Substation and fuel up, which isn't realistic, and I think our system is better right now. We're a good price and it's well managed with the program we have. But it was interesting, the immediate thing is, I think we've got with the W. B. Mason piece, something good, and then they also offer other materials you can buy, and they said they would deliver, they come through some county facility in Reinbeck where they would come up the road a little bit. And I've had Larry, who does our ordering, look at that, and it would be something where if we're buying a lot of any one thing, like hundreds and hundreds of pages of paper, say for the water bill, the newsletter, pardon?
It's change day.
Oh, sorry. I have to take a break. Okay, we're back. So we're talking about that shared services, and we've indicated that wherever we can, we'd like to work with them, and like everybody can tell us listening or watching, this board, you know, we do everything we can to find where we can save a few dollars, but maintain effective services. We're not looking to stop doing what we do, we're looking to do it the most efficient and effective way. So that was a good, good meeting. And then one other thing that I did, we, at the last monthly meeting, we talked about the merchants group we're trying to form, it's the retail brick and mortar folks that are really coming on in the village, a lot of new businesses are opening up. We put together a little seed energy to get them to a first meeting, and then they met here, the second meeting, in our village building. And exactly what we wanted to happen, looks to be happening, three of the folks are taking the lead, and we had fifty people here at this meeting, it was amazing, they filled the whole room. And it ranges from the drugstore to the new retail merchants to the bar owners and so forth. So they're looking to get some funding and run their own account, it wouldn't be village money, it wouldn't be any municipal money, it's just, they would do self-promotion combined cooperative advertising, worth looking at common hours, common storefront maintenance, seasonal window displays, different things that to make, pardon me? Yeah, we're talking them into working on Red Hook Halloween, they want to do Winterfest, which is great, it's, it'd be fun, and they're looking at some hanging floral baskets and different concepts, but again, it's, we're fostering it, but it's their money and their energy, you know, we're pretty busy doing other things, but it's a good meeting. That being said, we hit the regular business, those were a few extra comments I had. Any other business from the board?
Just one. As of today, our pattern book, the architectural guides are on our village website, so anyone interested, certainly it's a beautiful little publication and it is available on the website.
Could you describe more, more about that?
It was a project that we did over several years, required three grants to supply, but it, it talks about traditional architecture and how to blend into with new buildings, infill development, new residential development. And it's not specifically historical architecture, but ways to blend in with the historical context and architectural vocabulary I already set forth here in the village, so it's, it's pretty comprehensive, a lot of pictures, very village centric, and it's already been looked at by several developers and good thing.
Good. Well, we've hit the items. Oh, sorry.
I have something I want to bring before the board. Wasn't very clear.
That's fine.
I'd just like to bring before the board and open for discussion. I'll just read it. I would like to make the following speed reduction limit proposal for the village residential streets. The current village wide, wide area or speed limit is thirty mile an hour, set by the code of Village Red Hook, chapter one ninety, article two, paragraph five, speed limits in schedule two, chapter one ninety, paragraph thirty-six, speed limits. I would like to propose that on secondary and side streets named below, that the speed limit be reduced to twenty or twenty-five mile an hour. Making the proposal because of just very few of these streets are, they're sidewalks, and when walking, you must share the road with vehicles, i.e. cars, motorcycles, bicycles. I have also included a list of the streets, lanes, roads, et cetera, and whether they have sidewalks or not. We advertise the village as walking friendly, but as can be seen by those that walk, there's very few safeguards for walkers, joggers, et cetera, on the side streets.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate your creativity and your thinking. I know a few of us have kicked this idea around probably before your tenure on the board. I have two thoughts, maybe Brent and Jay over there can chip in or chime in. I think there's something that restricts just speed limits on different streets as far as how far down we can take them. Does that match any recollection? Or we talked about this once?
I know, I noticed in Tivoli they do have, even on Broadway, it comes down to twenty-five miles an hour, I don't know what the speed limit is, do you know, like on the other side streets in Tivoli?
I think the, I think the village rate is twenty-five.
Brent, stretch your mind, I think it's a great idea, but I'm just trying to, while we're all together, seems similar to doing that uniform traffic sign changeout, this came up then, and.
They were very.
Because we were changing street signs at that point, and we're like, hey, let's do more, let's go through, but.
Well, that had to do with.
Was there something with?
That had to do with the size of the lettering and rental reflectivity of the size, and that was based on speed limit, so if it's thirty miles, you know, you had to get it one certain size, if it was twenty-five miles, you know, you could do even a smaller lettering. So it was based on the speed limit, and I guess they figured the faster you go, the bigger the letter. So that's, it would have had nothing, the impact on local law, it just stated that if your speed limit was set to miles per hour, this is the size lettering and size sign it required to have, like that, for a junction.
So nothing specific that you can't go below thirty, I mean?
Well, not, not with the main of uniform traffic, but that is based on signage and basically on what is already local law for speed limits, so. I don't know enough about speed limit setting for that, I know Patrick knows more about that.
Because what I notice is, folks, for some reason, we have stop signs on most streets, a thousand feet at the most apart, but I can't get over how people feel like you have to go from zero to thirty-five to slam on your brakes for the next stop sign, like, come on, you make the same amount of time and save your brakes if you just go slowly. It's more of a, some sort of mental thing with people, as far as they just think they're getting through faster.
I've got a question for, do you think by reducing this, the speed limit will slow the cars down, or would that be more of a product of enforcement?
I think it would slow, slow the traffic down, but it's also a product of enforcement, though.
Jay's kind of quiet over there, I have another thought, too, but do you know, do you recall anything with, is there a lowered limit?
There's something back in the back of my mind, this, this had to be six or seven or eight years ago that just came up, and, I mean, I'm not positive, and don't hold me to it, but there's something about a lower limit for speed limits that I, and I can't remember exactly what it is or who had the actual control on that, but.
That's what's vaguely in the back of my head, too, but I have two thoughts. One is, why don't we let you chair a committee, and you could research that? And then B, I've asked Patrick to check if we could find better access, what I call the speed radar trailers, they're those portable radar, and they flash up, your speed is this, and it shows the village speed is that, and I would love to find the money. We priced them once, three or four or five years ago. They're a little more than one would imagine, they're like four, five, or six thousand dollars, but it'd be nice to own our own where we could move it around ourselves. We used to borrow one periodically from the sheriff's department, there was like one or two for the whole county, and they get, you know, it's a lot of territory to move them around and that part of it. We have reached out to Reinbeck Village, they apparently have their own that has, on the bottom, courtesy of Reinbeck P. D., and we thought, well, maybe if we make them an offer, we could put a little sign over it for a week or two, said Red Hook P. D., and yeah, just move it back and forth. I think those are effective, too. I, I'm not against what you're saying, it's just in the back of my head, I think there's something, so would you like to chair something and report back? We could, we could work with it.
I'll do the research.
Yeah, so, thanks for the suggestion. Anything else from the board? We'll go to this floor out there, I see some faces. Mr. George.
I have a quick question. Last week, there was the village board members and town board members up measuring the streets. Today, there was people out measuring the streets again, I was just wondering, will we be selling the village to somebody, or?
We were out a couple weeks ago, task force was out measuring, that's when I ran into you.
Right.
Now is to gather the new traditional neighborhood district that's been approved and implemented by the town of Red Hook, they're looking at the village as a precedent for a new neighborhood development, and so the town is currently trying to review and revise their highway specs. So to make it a narrower street, but how narrow would be effective, on-street parking may affect the width, we're talking with the highway department over there as far as effective maintenance, who's going to plow this, the road, so we are trying to get a feel for what, what the, the size of the village street that we have currently here, also based on how close houses are to the road itself, and how it affects the design of the street. What you saw the other day, I don't know.
Oh, today they're measuring again, but if you.
Who was, I don't know who was measuring.
It was two individuals in a board.
They were here involved in a traffic study for Noldwood Commons.
One of the things you have to consider when you're measuring streets or something like that, is there's no sidewalks in the village itself, in the main streets there is.
There are a few.
And snowplows would be a problem there because there's less place to put snow.
I think in, in the town, that's being discussed right now, with planting strips, you know, curb versus no curb, storm drains, good curbs, the types of tree species, so they're, again, they're looking at what we have in the village as a precedent, what works in the village to take over there. So sidewalks are, are going to be there, street trees are going to be there. This is being debated right now, the task force, so again, the task force is typically the Village Red Hook in the town, and.
I think another state, another way of stating what he's saying there is, that this TND is on the drawing boards down in the Hoffman Farms area, that's called, it's what, ninety-six units or whatever?
Ninety.
And it's, the TND concept is traditional neighborhood design, but the town is equipped for plowing the back roads and the wide roads and different sort of lanes that we, than we are used to, so they're talking to some village, Brent is Highway Trustee, and then they're looking through a different way, those places have to be maintained and different vehicles, and things we know how to do, but they don't.
We're looking at, for instance, Fraley Street on my corner there, where it's eighteen feet in front of my house, looking at Park Avenue, it's about twenty-two feet to twenty-five feet, houses are spread further back, there's no trees, there's sidewalk on one side, but visually and perceptionally, when you're driving down Park Avenue, you go faster, I mean, people speed on Park Avenue, you go on Fraley Street, Fisk Street, where the streets are gardens, or Grave Street, Cherry Street where they're narrow, the houses are parked up, people go not as fast as they do on Park or some of the wider streets without less trees or sidewalks, so that's what we're looking at.
Those who often stop at the stop sign do, but unless I'm sitting on the porch, eighty percent don't stop.
Isn't that funny?
I sit on my porch, too, and was right in the corner, you know where I live?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I can, if I had a pad out there.
They almost locked the tires up when they realized what we stood on the porch.
There's different ways of stopping, do you know, the kind of creepy crawling ones that go in there?
They go blasting, they do it at forty-five, you know, they figure out thirty-five mile, thirty mile an hour, and they did one forty-five.
Yeah.
Look around and turn, and there's no sight, you know, visual clearance coming out of Red Street.
I know, it's a, you have a very narrow street there, and especially in that intersection. Yeah, sixteen feet down by the pool there on Grave Street, but.
But that's what that was. Like Cindy said, there's some traffic studies going on around the village. Anything else?
I have a question first. You said that I had to repave Firehouse Lane, what's the reasoning? It seems like that street is fine.
No, it's, I wondered the same thing, we checked, and when you look at it, if you're not in a car, not driving on it, it's ready, and it's, it's a heavily traveled, kind of a bypass road, you know, there's a lot of folks go down it, but it's ready, and we don't want, it kind of goes to some of what we're discussing, where we talk about the water project, if this phase two comes to fruition, we don't want to spend the CHIPS money on streets we're going to dig up in a year over on the Southwest quadrant. And then other years, we've done what, Old Post and we've hit that quadrant pretty well. The CHIPS money goes to catch basins and road paving, sort of infrastructure type projects.
Projects that last for a ten-year minimum, it's all.
What about on Fisk Street, the, one of the road.
That may be for.
A culvert that needs to be repaved.
For next, next year, so you know, we look at what we have for CHIPS. Originally this year, we were going to do Garden Street. The streets back here are really, really bad, worse than the streets over there, Fisk included, Elizabeth Street. We did the survey, Firehouse Lane, Fisk, Elizabeth, they're probably in the same shape. As I said, Firehouse Lane gets a lot of traffic, as does Fisk, and we noticed when we were doing some tree pruning there, that actually surprised how many cars go down Fisk Street, starting the lane.
It's amazing, if they don't use the bypass on Firehouse Lane, they come to Fisk Street and use it. It's also very difficult to see when you're coming from Elizabeth Street, right, by our house.
You got the venue.
When you want to turn into our driveway, if you're coming from Elizabeth Street, you literally have to stop because there's trees there that really need to be pruned and probably never should have been planted there, and you can't see, especially this time of year.
Whose trees are they?
Thank you, pardon.
What, what trees, like, I'm trying to picture where you are there.
It's right across from our driveway, there's a telephone pole, and then there's several trees, but it blocks your view when you're coming from Elizabeth Street, going toward Route nine.
Well, two thoughts on your first question. Traffic calming is a concept, and one of Steve's points, what I would recommend his committee think of is, what else can you do? We've talked about it here, oftentimes, can you narrow a road with a bump out, can you make some variation of the speed?
I don't know, I don't hardly.
But what can you do to slow people down, but still make the road, but, but the adverse, yeah. We've thought about that, but the typical speed bump is not plowable, usually they blow them off the first storm or two, but some villages and towns have those longer, like thirty-foot mounds, so to speak. But right now, a traffic calming technique is to not have the best pavement, meaning if they can't go forty-five miles an hour because it's a little narrow and it's a little uneven, it's a traffic calming technique of its own, whereas Firehouse, it's an open lane, it's got sidewalks, it's a little bit more, and Firehouse does have access to the fire company, which is important, and different things, and we did weigh that as far as, because I had the same question, is that our best priority for the money? And, but when you go through improving Fisk, I think you get people going faster on Fisk, you know, but I know you're concerned with the catch basin there.
They go very fast on Fisk Street, you should sit there sometimes.
No, it's, I've walked.
I think the trees actually help to calm it down.
Pardon?
I think the trees actually help to slow the traffic down.
If you sat in our yard, you would be surprised how fast the cars go past our place. Very fast.
I think maybe we should switch ports at some time.
Yeah, I wish I.
And you could see how fast they go down on my street.
Or just, just come over and sit for a little while.
Neighborhood.
But realistically, it is, I can't imagine where all these cars go, because they're obviously cutting through, and they go down Garden Street, they go down His Street, they go down Fraley Street, they, I don't know, yours is sort of a cul-de-sac neighborhood, but, yeah, yours, it's, people are finding routes, I don't know, where the hell going? You know, it's like midday, it's like cars going by and.
You can't get to the center of town.
Pardon me?
You can't get to the center of town, it's like two lights, you sit there five, ten minutes, it seems like forever, you're sitting.
That's why we get them, because you can tell, you look up the street and the traffic has stopped.
Oh, definitely.
Certain hours of the day.
If you're coming like on Saturday morning, if you're coming, if you go to the transfer station, and you're coming back out, you do not go down Firehouse Lane back out to Route nine.
Right.
The best way of coming is Fisk Street, gives you opportunity to get on Route nine, get down there, otherwise, you're going to sit there with all the bank traffic coming out, you're going to sit there a while.
It's easy to come from the south and go down Firehouse Lane as opposed to coming out Firehouse Lane, to go south or anyplace. out Firehouse Lane, to go south or anyplace.
David, you want to say your name, just so people...
My name is David S. Queen, I live at 23 Cambridge Drive over near Steve there. I didn't know I was going to talk tonight.
Well, you want to use the podium, or what do you feel comfortable doing?
What I like to do is just read what I, my thoughts, and then I'll answer whatever you...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Village Board, uh, this should probably be old business. Uh, two years ago, on August 28th, 2011, Hurricane Irene left us with 4.69 inches of rainfall and considerable flooding of properties. Some of these flooded properties surround a pond located on the north side of Fisk Street, between South Broadway and Elizabeth Street, that I have come to call Kramer's Line, which was referred to in an old deed. And following this flooding, I was contacted by some of the ponds adjoining owners and asked to do some research from an engineering standpoint. I happen to be related by marriage to one of the adjoiners. I'm a member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post over there, and I'm friends to other people around there. So that's how I got into it. But the reason, or part of the reason for the pond and property flooding is, in my opinion, resulting from two pipes whose downfall outlets were both plugged by the Perks Brownfield Cleanup Project circa 2006, 2007, in preparation, done in preparation for the Red Hook Commons construction. These pipes are a plugged 8-inch pond overflow, vitrified tile pipe installed circa 1889, and a plugged 18-inch South Broadway Highway Drain installed circa 1947. That's Route Nine. That, uh, that 18-inch line should serve as the nearest emergency flood discharge point. Uh, these people have a right to feel very apprehensive every time there's a heavy rainfall, giving rise to flash flooding. And they look for some reason to have confidence, confidence in the Village of Red Hook and the State Department of Transportation, that they will look out for their interests and not add to the problem. That these people have a case history of 2011 to fall back on with the flooding. They also have the 2008 flooding of the USB property down there. And I don't have it on the top of my head, but there's at least, probably at least 10 that I looked in the rainfall records where there was heavy raining. And of course, it's like Russian roulette, you know, it depends on what the ground conditions are when you get that rain. Uh, if you're lucky, which we've been lucky, because I checked the pond, it's down about where the, uh, there's a, a concrete chamber over there at the outlet from the pond. And that's, I take that to be the intended pond level years ago that they built. You were given a letter from the group dated June 27th, 2013, asking permission to conduct an emergency response pumping drill from the pond to verify the state's claim that the highway drain is functioning adequately rather than backflowing through the 8-inch line into the pond. The, the village and the, and the state found both outflows buried back in, uh, 2012, March 2012. And it seems like it should become courtesy of these people, the village should give a timely response to the group and some indication of what actions you're taking to solve it. I don't want to oversimplify this, but you have a backhoe and you have an operator that could dig the outlet ditch down there. And, uh, New York State DOT has staked out the existing easement lines. And I don't see where anybody, any official people would have a problem getting permission to go down there and dig the outlet ditch to open up that, that outfall, because the Brownfield project was a Conservation Department project to start with that plugged it. So that's the way I feel. So, from there, I don't know what you're going to do, because we don't have any standing. And I know people say, I don't want to pay for this, but this letter didn't say that we're asking the village to pay for doing this, the pump test.
Thank you.
All this is asking for permission to go on the property and do it.
Well, let's be clear about a few things. When you started to speak, we've been talking to you for probably at least two years. I mean, we've had several meetings with you and the people you represent. Um, when you mentioned Hurricane Irene back in August 2011, you might have misstated the rainfall total. You said 4.69 inches, I think we had way more rain than that. And did you misread a state, a number there, or did you mean 4.69, or?
I, I remember the rainfall, I know where it came from, the buildings over there.
But, but you stated a number there.
Oh, I gave you a number, I took that out of a Weather Bureau paper.
Yeah, but, it was, we had Irene, then Lee followed, what, six weeks later? There were way more than 4.69 inches of rain. It was, I don't have the numbers in my head, but it was like 21, or it was some unguity amount of rain we had.
I didn't know what the Weather Bureau said.
Two, two thoughts. I don't know, we're not going to resolve anything here and now. I don't know if you're being, begating a factor too, but in 2012, our backhoe, our team, you were there, my, I was there, Brent was there for a part of the day. DOT was there. We actively worked to get DOT to survey their line, find out where their 1947 line is. We dug different places, including the old Perks project, which is now the senior citizens project. And that, like you know, was a brownfield taken over by the County of Dutchess, you know, worked with the state, sold to the town, you know, not to the town, there was a whole ownership transaction, but the brownfield was cleaned up by the state of New York DEC. It was nothing to do with the village, and it was, none of our men or anybody did any damage or any work there. When you say damaged pipes, it's whoever did the DEC brownfield cleanup theoretically is what you're alleging somehow affected it. I'm not sure, we don't know. The pipes we found, DOT told us the pipes, they presumably would be four to five feet down, this is from recollection, we found them about eight feet down. There was fill changes, different things happened there, but there was no clear indication they were down around the pipes.
The DOT, the DOT pipe was above their 1800s, you know, it's called 1800s pipe, it was above that pipe. And the DOT pipe only connects those storm drains on Route Nine back, it doesn't go back to the pond. So, the DOT does not have any type of, that we could recall, or what they could recall, anything other than the catch basins on Route Nine by Garden Street, they go back by St. Chris's there.
And the other thing for people watching, we're talking about literally probably half a mile of buried pipes that we were searching and, um, following it back as best we could. And the DOT, DOT was cooperative, we were cooperative. The underlying problem for this board and the prior boards since this has come up is, we know the pond is the problem. We know in 1889, you mentioned that the, a transportation type corporation, a precursor that was formed, in those days it was a state-enabled drainage association, where adjoining owners form a group and they funded and paid for a drainage pipe.
And this is for the village.
The village of Red Hook didn't even exist until 1894, so 1889, the adjoining owners decide they want to drain it for farming or health or whatever reasons, and they build a pipeline. And when we read the law, we see that those owners agreed to tax themselves to maintain that pipeline. It was, and we can't find any record where it ever became village property, and the pond is still private property, and it goes, this drainage line goes through private property since 1889, and you used some technical terms there, was the type of pipe, I think that's the 47 pipe you were talking about. This pipe, I, this is now 2013, so 1889 is what, we 130 years out roughly? Um, that's a long time for any pipe to last. We're worried about pipes from 1937, and they're metal, you know. Um, but I did get your letter in June where you were suggesting a test drill or whatever emergency pumping you're talking about. But, we don't feel, we, some of us talked about individually, we can talk about it more now, it's private property, we, we can't foot the cost of another pump. We've twice, we use FEMA money once, and then another time we use private ownership money and some of the village money on emergency levels. We are capable of pumping it if there's an emergency. I think what you're looking for is some sort of test pumping to see where, if you can test where the water goes.
Part of it, which is good thing.
But, but we have no interest in, we can't cross people's private property with pipes for non-emergency reasons. We can't flood Route Nine. You, you're looking to essentially flood Route Nine, let it find its catch basins and go somewhere. We're just not prepared to do that, especially since it's private property that surrounds the pond. We've suggested numerous times, the private owners, there's seven or eight of them, sit, and we've had multiple meetings with everybody, charge themselves two, three, four hundred bucks each, get environmental consultant, get whatever they need and see what they can do. It's, we've done a lot of legwork on that project, all of us, like it. Uh, and we keep coming back to the same thing, we know it's a problem, but it's private property. And when we thought about your test run, where would I bring a pipe? Do I bring it over, whose property do I bring it? But we did an emergency level, I can sign an emergency declaration and say, I need to pull water because I'm losing basements, I'm losing furnaces and roads. The biggest thing for us, when our infrastructure was threatened, we felt we couldn't get fire equipment and ambulances through Fisk, so we, we could draw a line and sign papers so we can spend some money. But, we're not equipped, we can't pump out and help a private owner, own, privately-owned pond. And we thought of every way we can to try to help you. You know, lately we're talking about community, uh, preservation fund money, where, you know, when real estate transactions happen in the town and the village, the surcharge on houses over a certain value, it builds a fund. Is there a way you guys could form something to qualify? See, you can't come in as a private entity into that, but is there something you form?
You did come in differently.
Well, all seven have to get together though, it's not one person, but...
This is, to me, has really came, come down to two problems right now. One of them is a safety issue, the other one's just to drain the pond. This is not dealing with just drain, it may indirectly work that way, but it is a safety issue saying, they have, I believe, a reasonable right to feel that their property can be protected in the event of a flood. And the flood has occurred, that it's past history of it. So you say, where is it going to go? The truth is, I don't agree with the, the state. Now, you want to take their statement that it's functioning adequately, I don't believe it, because you got, you got, uh, uh, 2008 when it flooded USB down there. It, it's not functioning, all right? It could be, I believe, looking at the plans, the state plans, the plan said they took out that manhole that was in the 8-inch line. So, that's the whole thing. To me, we're worried about draining the pond after, but the point is the, the protection of the, the, the emergency part of the protection of it. They have a right to know that that's going to function. The last time, uh, one of the people paid for it, I guess it's over a thousand dollars to pump it north going up to East Market Street, I guess. And as I remember, you said, there was objections to that. The closest place is right here on Broadway, right next to the place. That's the closest place. It's a logical place, it's a place where it used to go. So, you can say you don't, you, I believe you have authority to do that. You can say, well, you can't go on private property. That's got easements all along there, that you got entitled to because it's state easements for those pipelines. That's all we're asking, is to take that water, pump it into the highway system that the state says is functioning adequately, and put a die in it to see whether it does come out at the other end, or whether it comes back out in the pond. That's all we're saying.
Well, I would submit, I don't think you need the emergency pumping to do that, personally. And I think you have to be clear, there's no easement from the pond to Route Nine. The easements run from Route Nine to the old Perks property. We have no easement to do anything on those private properties over there, neither does the state. Nothing drains by intent to the pond. And the question you're trying to see is what's happening in reality? And, uh, but to be fair, you've written to the county, to the state, to county elected people, state elected people, including us, and has any of them gotten back to you? It's, I mean, pardon?
I, I would say it's a case of bureaucracy more.
Yeah. And I think fortunately, we're accessible and we're friendly, and I would state for the record, we've had multiple meetings and we've, I think we've strained everything we can think of to try to help you, but we don't have...
Is it to help or to evade it?
To what? The help or what?
You aren't, you went down, you dug it, you proved it, it's blocked down there. Now whose responsibility do you think it is?
State's.
Huh?
The state's.
Ah, there you go, there's your bureaucracy of it. What does the state tell you? The state says, sure, you signed years ago in 1947, you signed some kind of agreement from the village that you're going to take care of that.
Well, I think, I think...
That's what happens.
I think, David, the record should show that 1889 and 1947 were a long time ago.
No, no, I'm not talking about 18, I'm not talking now about 1889, I'm talking about 1947.
Yeah, still, still a long time ago.
Somebody, I can't help it, that's, I can show you the paper from 1920 where the Village of Rhinebeck said, uh, Rhine, uh, Red Hook said, they'll take care of this. And then they changed, and they add to the system in 1947, the Village of Red Hook still said they were going to take it. Somebody asked the state to build that, they didn't come in here and say, well, we want to build it. The Red Hook Village asked for that, at least the highway drainage part. And I'm saying the highway drainage part is the emergency system for these people. Really, you, you can deny it, but you're saying, well, let the, let the, well, the state don't want to, the state don't want to do it, they say it's your problem. You don't want to do it, you say it's the state's problem. So the other people are like, what do they call it, whiplash, where you get knocked back and forth, right?
I don't know, David, we've had multiple meetings, like I said, and...
Yeah, I know, we have.
If there was an answer, it'd be done. It's, it's like, what's, if you, I mean, you're an engineer retired, but to run new drainage for the state, they said they wouldn't build new drainage. It's to be, to be, excuse me, I rephrase that. We, when we dug the holes, we found plugged pipes, no doubt about it, state DOT plugged pipes. Um, they said they, there's no way they could clean it, and they recommended they would rebuild the whole thing. Then the question is, okay, rebuild it. But that's not your problem, that's, that's the state DOT Route Nine drainage, and it's, that's not anything to do with the pond. So it's, I don't know where we go. It's, I think we've had meetings, and I still firmly believe it's private property. We can't spend taxpayer money on private property. The folks found a way in 1889 to drain it, the thing's in antiquity now, and anecdotal information we got at our meetings is around 1976 it started to not drain properly, which even, that's a long time ago. And we don't know how to check that down.
You're saying, that, then as a mayor, you're saying officially, you don't have any responsibility for that 15-inch pipe that drains the state highways?
I would think that officially, in 1947, whatever the state law was, somebody should have been cleaning that drainage pipe. And then what happened since then, I have no idea. Nobody has a record of cleaning that from the village's level ever, so it's, um...
Well, this, I don't, I don't feel like wasting my time, I haven't got that much time left, you know. But, uh, I think you're a ready subject. I think you have a responsibility under the state highway law to clean that 15-inch line. You can argue about the 8-inch line, but the emergency response location, that is that 15 or 18-inch line, no... Go half a mile down there. That's a village's responsibility.
You read the same state letter we gave it to you. The state said their system is functioning, is the word they used.
What, what's the, the state's told you, it's over and over, that's your responsibility. You don't believe it.
The same time they say it's functioning.
Yes.
Because we've, we've argued against the state, just like you argued against me. We've said, where's the water going? And they said, well, it's functioning. Where's the water going? They say it's functioning. But I don't think we're going to resolve anything here. The underlying essence is it's private property. We can't spend taxpayer money on the pond side. If the pond owners would organize, they've got you, you're a great worker for them. But they need to get some idea. It's got to be pumped. We've told everybody it's probably a three, four, five hundred down that project to put a pumping station and tie in somewhere to get it off the watershed. And it's not a village project. It's, it's, in eighteen ninety-nine, eighteen eighty-nine, those owners found a way to do it. And now the new owners have to find a way to do it again. This is why I look at it. We'll work with you. We'd love to try to find community preservation funds. We haven't hidden from you. We haven't evaded anything. We, I've been out.
I'm sure you've had.
Oh, come on. I was out there with you in the last summer.
Have you, did you clean out the end of that pipe? No. You uncovered it.
We're not going to.
And then you covered it. I looked at it and it's covered over again.
Yeah, but you, you were at the midpoint when we opened the midpoint. You saw what the midpoint looked like.
I saw. And I know how this stuff got there too.
How'd it get there?
And, and you know, the Village of Red Hook owned that property when it was cleaned, as I remember.
When it was what?
The Village of Red Hook was involved with that ditch. Perk Greenup.
No, no. I looked into that. We owned it for about fifteen seconds at a closing when it moved from the county to the private owner. It had to go through, it was all federal process, D E C. We had nothing to do with that. But anyway, I'm going to end the discussion. We have to move on. You and I can meet personally, privately, which I've always done with you. Okay? Thank you. Other things, folks? I think we need a motion to pay bills after audit. Is there a second? All favor? Aye. And then, from my perspective, when I'm done, you guys have anything else?
If anyone found a salad server at the potluck, someone's missing it. Just let us know. It was a very special, part of a salad tongs.
Speaking of the power of media for the cameraman there, um, we have a question for Panda.
She needs her salad.
It wasn't mine. It was, it was a, a member of the band lost one of their salad tongs, so.
It was what, oak?
Maybe by the, yes, beautiful, maybe it was, I don't know.
Probably went home at the wrong bowl somehow.
Yeah, so maybe for those people who came, I'm sure you're watching on Panda, if you found it, let me know. We'll get it to the rightful owner and they can have salad again.
You could let, drop it off at Cindy Cole's office and we'll get it to the right person. Now, we were curious, I know, in the audience, Panda twenty-three Time Warner Cable just did a digital conversion. I'm curious, do most people still get it on twenty-three or are you finding it on twenty-point-two? Any?
I think I'm just playing twenty-three.
Yeah.
It's so loud.
So loud. I don't know. But anyway, so I'd be curious if people watching, if you could let us know somehow, are you getting it on twenty-three still or twenty-point-two? How did it split the market? Do people know it's still up there? Do you have any input on that? Pardon me?
Can you find C B S?
Oh, that's another one.
No, no. Do I have any input on that? No. But there was a community over in Oyster County that filed objection with Time Warner.
Yeah.
Over.
Woodstock?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. That being said, entertaining motion, Mr. Brent, to adjourn the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the Stevens' meeting.
Is there a second, Mr.?
I'd love to second that.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Good night, everybody.